All right, uh, welcome.
Luke Carmer.
Here.
Richard Wolf.
Here.
Chris Morley.
Here.
Mark Bradler.
Here.
Approval of the agenda, anything to add? I don't know, chairman.
Nothing, Dan.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve.
Move to approve the minutes.
Of the agenda.
Of the agenda this evening.
Second, motion by Luke, second by, uh, Chris to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, unanimous. Um, approval of the minutes from, uh, March twelfth, twenty twenty four? Anybody have any changes?
I don't, and I'm gonna admit that typically on my agenda, I'm, I mark who approved and who seconded, and I can't find my minutes, so I, I don't feel like I have the right to say the minutes. Don't reflect the accuracy of the meeting from March, so I'm not gonna make a motion.
Move to approve the minutes from the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting.
Second.
Motion by Luke, second by Mark, approve the minutes, March twelfth, twenty twenty four, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, is anybody here for, um, I assume mostly are here for, uh, the conditional use meetings, and we'll have a public hearing on those. Anybody here for this in the public forum beforehand? All right, here and then, uh, we'll go on to the, uh, public hearings. I now call agenda item seven A, the public hearing for case number CU dash twenty twenty four dash zero three, request for conditional use to allow a beer, wine, or liquor store in C one Arts and Business District. Does any member of the planning commission wish to abstain from voting on this agenda?
No.
No.
Let the record show there are no abstentions. Uh, does any member of the planning commission wish to report any expertise communications?
No.
No.
None of this case.
Okay, let the record show that no expertise communications have been reported. The secretary has reported a notice to this hearing was published in Art Bailing News on four, four, twenty twenty four, which is at least twenty days advanced notice as required. The property owner and surrounding property owner were also notified by letter at least twenty days prior to this hearing. Therefore, I declare the notification requirements have been satisfied for the public hearing. I will now ask Dustin Belton to present a brief cases to report any recommendations.
All right, thank you. Uh, today we have CU twenty twenty four oh three, Carlos Ramos and Luis Ramos, conditional use as an exception to allow a beer, wine, or liquor store for property zoned as the C one Arts and Business District. Here it is, two hundred east Kechai Road. The applicants are requesting a conditional use to allow a beer, wine, or liquor store for properties zoned as the C one Arts and Business District. The applicants have plans to have a liquor flower shop with the possibility of a coffee ice cream shop. The building is planned to be seventy-five by a hundred feet or seven thousand five hundred square feet. The property itself is thirty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-two square feet. The building will take up approximately twenty percent of the total space. In the Arts and Business District, the maximum permitted square footage is one hundred percent minus applicable yard and off-street parking requirements. The property is plotted as lot one, block one, the board block addition, and is currently undeveloped. Beer, wine, or liquor store is defined in the zoning regulations as establishments that provide retail sales of packaged alcoholic beverages. A beer, wine, or liquor store is only allowed on properties in the C one Arts and Business District with conditional use approval. The applicant has provided a site plan showing a general layout of the building and site. However, a final site plan shall be submitted to planning staff, uh, staff prior to final approval. Case history, in twenty fifteen, the subject's site was plotted as lot one, block one of the board block addition. There were three zoning cases heard for this property in twenty fifteen. The first one, BZA CU twenty fifteen dash oh two, a conditional use request for principal building exceeding the gross maximum size. BZA V twenty fifteen dash zero two, variance request for a reduction in total parking spaces. And subdivision twenty fifteen dash zero two, subdivision case for the replating of the three properties to one lot. The lot was originally three separate lots combined into one. Section fourteen point six C of the Kechai zoning regulations states, conditional use, uses approved in accordance with these regulations shall run with the land upon approval. They shall remain in effect without regard to ownership so long as the use remains on the subject property without being significantly altered or destroyed. Section fifteen point six point B point three of the Kechai zoning regulations state that variances granted by the board shall be valid for a period not to exceed one hundred eighty days from the hearing date. Case BZA CU twenty fifteen dash oh two and BZ, BZA V twenty fifteen dash oh two were heard and approved on June fifteenth, twenty fifteen. However, because no action occurred to construct the proposed use and structure on the property, the previous approvals are null and void. These previous cases are not in, will not impact the current applicants' or plans. To the north of the, of said property is C one and R one, Arts and Business District and single-family residential. To the south, east, and west are all C one. Uh, Kechai Road is a paved local road, and all public services are available and provided to the property. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Kechai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Page seventeen of the comprehensive plan states, build a strong and diverse local economy. Page eighteen states, a key objective for growing Kechai's economy is to promote the development of the Arts and Business District as the local hub of commercial and economic activity. Page twenty-five states, Kechai should provide ample gathering spaces, especially within the Arts and Business District. The future development plan map depicts the subject property as appropriate for Arts and Business District, which permits a beer, wine, or liquor store by conditional use and a flower shop by right. Based upon information prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved subject to following conditions. The beer, wine, or liquor store must comply with the table of required off-street parking by land use of section seven point three. Two, the applicant shall provide a revised site plan including building dimensions, setbacks, easements, and an appropriate drainage plan relative to the project and structure before any building permit is submitted. Three, development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. Four, if the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. This recommendation is based on the following findings. The properties to the south, east, and west are zoned and developed as C one Arts and Business District. Properties to the north are zoned and developed as R one Single Family Residential District and C one Arts and Business District. The request for the conditional use is in conformance with Kechai's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff do not see any increase in public utilities or services. Four, the subject's site is currently zoned C one Arts and Business District, which permits a beer, wine, or liquor store by conditional use approval. Five, the property has been undeveloped around and since the time of plating in twenty fifteen. Six, staff does not see an issue with C one Arts and Business District being adjacent to other C one Arts and Business District and R one Single Family Residential District. Property owners to the north have submitted a zoning permit along their south side of the property, thus creating a screen between the two properties. Seven, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on surrounding properties. Eight, approval of this request represents a gain in the public in that it contributes to support economic opportunities in the area. Approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to the public health, safety, or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss in the use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. Nine, no input, positive or negative, has been received from the public at the time of the staff report. Here we have an aerial view of the property. Zoning map showing that it is, that to the north is R one and surrounding pink is C one. Uh, future development plan map showing the approximate location of where the property is. Here is the site plan to the north. And we're seeing a uh, seventy-five feet by a hundred, got an ice cream shop, coffee shop, and the liquor store over here. Parking possibly on the west side. Uh, site photos looking to the north. East, south of the subject property, there's now a house there, and west. Does the planning commission have any questions for me?
Any questions for Dustin?
So. Excuse me, uh, Justin, um, on the sketch plans submitted by the applicant.
Yes, sir.
Um, generally, it looks like two-thirds of the building would be ice cream shop, a third would be the alcoholic beverage sales, I think. Noted on the top to the east, what would be that building? Is a drive-through?
Yes, that was given to me at the time of, uh, the applicant's submission. The drive-through and, drive-through is not allowed in C one at all. And it was left out of the report because the original submission was for a flower shop. And.
Not a liquor store?
No, 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 it was, it was a liquor store and a flower shop combined.
Okay.
That was what the original applicant, uh, original application stated. The ice cream coffee shop came later, and that was just added on the site plan that was submitted to me.
As a secondary use to the proposed building? The, 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 not, not the drive-through per se, but just an ice cream type coffee shop was submitted as a proposed secondary use for this building with a drive-through?
Yeah, well, yes, the drive-through would, yes.
And you've, uh, my understanding is you've since informed the applicant that drive-throughs are not allowed in the C one district?
Correct.
And, okay, just, thank you.
Is this, I don't have any further questions for the zoning district?
Is this gonna be all one building or?
No, I believe so.
So is, uh, multi-use for these, um, type of, for the liquor shop and the ice cream or coffee shop are allowed?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dustin? All right, thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
I'll now ask the applicant to step the podium and state her name and address and just know if you have anything you wanna add to that, and if not, um, keep us in question.
No, my name is Carlos Ramos. I am actually, uh, I live in Augusta, but my main business line is Valley Floor Company. And actually, owning greenhouse is there and here in Kechai, so we've been part of this community for a long time, thank you. So I've owned Valley for the last eleven years, thank you. And what we've done, try to enhance that greenhouse, and one of the things that we're very proud of, I'm here with my management, the greenhouse, is that we have now the most successful, most sought-out greenhouse in the state of Kansas, thank you. So that's something that Kechai has been part of. You guys have seen some of the events that we've been able to host, and we have a lot of novelty cool things that bring a lot of people to check out greenhouse. And if you follow social media or follow, uh, I'm gonna say plant groups, thank you. We're just one of the most sought out, and we're hoping to achieve some success by having that local feel in, uh, like in the ice cream parlor kind of concept, so a very local, down-to-earth shop where people can come over and enjoy, and the liquor store, because it's something that we feel like this community would also, you know, make it a little more valuable, thank you. So we're here to say, we've invested in this town, and we hope to, you know, to keep adding value to this community, so this community, thank you. Any questions for me that I can answer?
I got one, is, so the initial thing was for liquor, liquor store, right? And then you were talking about, and is it gonna be one building?
Right, it's gonna be one building. It's, it's gonna have kind of almost like a strip-like feel, thank you, that it's gonna be subdivided. And one of the things that, it was at later on, because I started researching this, uh, town, you know, me and my team, we have heard from the community that a coffee shop was something that's been talked about on several occasions during planning phases of how to increase the business, so we thought it'd be something that could, uh, could keep it going, you know. You guys have a lot of great residents here, and we thought that on their way to work, it'd be really cool if they would be able to stop by, pick up a cup of coffee. We didn't realize that the drive-through was all of our options, which we understand, but still. You know, and, you know, for example, in the, you know, afternoon, and since summer comes in, we thought an ice cream parlor would be very, you know, cool, people be able to have an ice cream and kind of walk around the area and check out the shops, hopefully check out a greenhouse. You know, we have later hours, um, and as far as the liquor store, we felt like it's something that, you know, we checked it out. We have a, Dustin was able to see some of our concepts as far as liquor stores, and we try to keep it on the very high end of things, a very, you know, pristine, very little bit nicer type of alcohol, you know, for people to enjoy. And also, yeah, the regular beer as well.
Is there a maximum square footage for the building? It used to be twenty-five, but now it's not.
For that long?
Not in C one.
Not in C one, it just applicable required yards, so it can be as big or as, yeah.
And, you know, that really comes from the, my history with the city is that if that, that more comes from a lot of those buildings existed without any setback requirements. So if we're gonna use an existing building for occupancy, how much lot or how much the building? A lot of them already exceed the limits, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Carlos, do you operate these types of businesses in Augusta or anywhere else, or is this kind of a, a first?
This is actually our first concept to be able to have a strip, thank you. I have businesses in Tulsa, football in the city, Midway City, Dutch City is something that we're trying to plan to. I operate in Kansas City, obviously Wichita, Kechai. So as far as from a business standpoint, um, I operate in twelve different businesses, thank you, that do well over a million dollars in sales, maybe. Some of them do between five and seven million dollars, thank you. My total business model is about twenty-two to twenty-five million dollars, thank you. Our value pool is about a hundred and fifty people, but we believe Kechai was a great spot to test this concept. That was having strip feel at the local level, um, because we wanna be able to, I, I don't think any small business person like myself can take on a Kroger, a Costco, things like that. So we wanna really invest in small communities, you know, communities that have less than ten thousand people. Invest in and set something up, and then hopefully get that local support and have that, you know, bi-local feel. And this is where greenhouse is really cool, as we noticed it over the times. Thanks to some of the great stuff that I have, you know, we've been able to grow that local, you know, bi-local, support the small shop, you know, uh, and we believe that that's gonna be the next way, you know. Invest in small cities and not try to go out there and compete in like Wichita or Kansas City or Tulsa or Oklahoma City.
Dustin, thank you.
Uh, I was wondering if you were considering, uh, in your concept, whether you'd have any outdoor seating area, in such a manner to, to kind of accentuate this deposit aspect of, of the, the flower shop slash ice cream parlor or whatever you end up putting there?
Uh, yes, and then, can I show the map, thank you, the, so I can kind of give you an idea, the original drawing that I gave, can that come up on the room?
Maybe.
Okay, thank you. And I can just kind of give a little bit of a rundown, thank you. We're having a little bit, uh, the, the one that you just showed, the one with my little drawing.
Oh.
Yes, uh, I, please, I apologize for the cream to my drawing, it's something I was kind of playing around with the idea, um. One of the things that we thought about, as we're doing, depending on the space, since this drive-through option kind of goes away, is bring this building a little bit further back into address, maybe some of the, uh, uh, drainage that goes on there. Be able to build like a small pond that kind of serves as some kind of drainage and create an area where families can kind of walk through around. To answer the question, yes, we would have kind of outside, and since we have greenhouse, we have access to very kind of unique lines of plants, trees, uh, we have, Seth, do we still donate to the zoo?
Uh, yes, he comes through about once or twice a year.
So a lot of the plants that you see, uh, at the zoo actually come through us, you know, things that didn't quite make our standards, so we donate to the zoo. And we're able to beautify with a few plants that kind of make that look and feel. Seth, I mean, what type of plants would you, you know, because I know you and I talked about it a little bit.
Oh, a, a very interesting one that we have coming in this weekend are, uh, cold hardy bananas. Uh, cold hardy all the way to zone five, so they'd be edible banana trees that could survive the winters here. Um, just basically things like that. Hi, they're working on hibiscus year after year, creating more hardy versions, so lots of bright colors, lots of unique foliage that you wouldn't normally see. And then, if any of you have been through the back greenhouse, we do quite well with the annuals every year as well, spring and fall.
And I would encourage, you know, the members to please check out a green, so you can see how you've been able to move up those levels and and things that would be available on the outside for a level of public to appreciate and to enjoy.
Any other, any other question?
Well, thanks.
Okay.
Um, so the design administrator told you that the drive-through concept with the ice cream coffee shop isn't permitted in there, and I hope you understand that, that the, the vision for the Arts and Business District is walkable.
Sure.
So drive-through really isn't conducive to that, um, type thing, um. And, believe me, I'm not a business person, so I trust you that you've done your, your research and you think that this is a feasible idea, but we have had several different liquor stores in, in Kechai, and one of them was, uh, uh, permitted shortly after Sunday liquor stores. Uh, Sunday liquor sales were permitted in the state of Kansas. And we have a lot of people coming to Kechai, because this is one of the first places they could buy beer on Sunday. So, and I'm, I'm not opposed at all, I'm, I'm a consumer of alcohol. Um, but as I, I guess I'm, I guess not drawing the, when you say it's a flower shop liquor store. And, 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 and I, I wanna stop there and, and go back to myself. Um, because I think we have another case coming up shortly after this that deals with multi-resident or multi-retail places in one spot. I, I think, I don't have any problem with the strip mall concept or whatever, even in the C one district. As long as those uses are permitted in the C one district. And that's what City Kechai is looking for.
Yes.
In that area. So, um, uh, I'm very pleased to hear that you're aware that the previous plat that was approved, that the drainage plan isn't gonna work, and that you, that's something that you have to address there with the city staff and their engineers. I am very pleased to hear that. Um, there's also, uh, as I said, the, to me and, and my understanding of the Arts and Business District is supposed to be walkable, so we don't want to have a lot of barriers in there between businesses, you should be able to, to walk that, so. I, I, I like a lot of what I, I'm, I'm hearing that you're proposing, and I just wanna make sure that's, uh, there's no, I guess what I, my, when I, when this request was presented to me, to me, one of the things that I first saw out and I thought about was a liquor store, was, well, they tend to have a lot of these signs, temporary signs that says, hey, thirty pack of Bud Light for twenty dollars for, for this. And I'm not sure that that's what I thought, that people thought that the Arts and Business District should be like. And yes, we kind of have that with the convenience store, and that's kind of where I, and, and but they're a different zoning. They're not the C one that we're talking about now. And there's no, like I said, there's no specific conditions that in the zoning regulations that, that says this, the planning commission or the city council should look to saying, hey, this is, when you're looking at this as conditional, you should look for this, you should look for that. So when I looked at that, the only thing that I really came to was signage. And the signage for the C one district is also for the residential districts. And I, and I wrote it down, I'm not pulling it up right now, but it's, it's like sixteen square feet for a sign, so four by four. It's not apprehensive, but in, when I read the regs and full disclosure, I was one of the people that enacted the current regulations. So a lot of these things don't pop up to you until somebody presents you a certain scenario saying, well, what about if we did this? And you're like, oh, okay. So to me, that was the only thing that I thought about when this came up, and it said it's a conditional use, which means that this board can recommend conditions to the city council that, that this should be approved. And then the city council can accept or ignore those conditions completely. But that was the thing that, that popped out to me. In the C one district, do I wanna see those thirty-pack Bud, you know, Miller Lite signs that I see next to buy Hunt's Brothers Pizza in front of the convenience store? Is that what we envisioned in the C one?
The, the.
And, and the regulations say it's sixteen, if I remember right, sixteen square feet, four by four. I looked at it, I'm like, that, that sounds okay. So to me, what I didn't see in the regulations was a time period. And like I said, I'm the one that helped enact, enact the current regulations, so I kind of feel like I'm criticizing myself in a certain way, but I just didn't, looking at it in a different chair and bringing it to you, you people and, and the institutions, whether that's something that concerns them, I would be more than, uh, willing to hear any comments on that, but that, this, this is only allowed as a conditional use, which means that the, this planning commission can recommend conditions to the city council, and they can enact them. So when I looked at that, that's the only thing I saw as a condition that I might wanna consider. And, and I wouldn't say yea or nay, I mean, I'm only one vote. So that's, I'm just bringing it up for discussion, I guess, as to whether anybody else, and this is, and I'll, okay, when we rewrote the regs, there was a Supreme Court case that just came down about signage, and that you couldn't regulate signage based on what it said. You can only regulate signage based on its size. You can only regulate signage based on its size and zoning regulation and everything else. So, it was a big to-do, we spent over a year on, on signage regulations. So, again, you know, this is probably me looking back saying, maybe we should consider this a little more. I would enjoy any feedback from anybody else, this is just me talking. As far as conditions to put on this, um, I don't, like I said, we've had several liquor stores in the city of Kichai in my time as I was on the administrator in the previous decade. So I don't really think that there's, I don't have any concerns with that. And the other conditions that I looked at in C one, signage was the only one that stuck out to me, so that's my comment.
Thanks, Chris. Is parking, or you got, was it like out in the front?
The, the, depending on how the drainage works out, they do, there's several ways to do drainage. Like we said, we can put something, some kinda pond-like level towards the back, bring the building to the front. So we are gonna work with the engineers that the, the city has recommended or allowed us to be able to use. And, and depending on how drainage, it could be where parking lot happens here. Or we bring the building back a little bit and the parking lot would be on the front. But it's all gonna be based on how drainage works out and the most cost-effective way of making it happen. We're still beautiful and it looks, you know, pleasant to the eye.
Any other questions from, not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I will now open the public hearing. And did you take names that people wanna talk, no?
No, we have several that we're gonna talk on different ones.
Okay, so, um, if you raise your hand, I'll, um, go ahead and tell you to come up with a hand. And then when you come, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And then make your comments according to the rules the conduct read earlier, which are basically, uh, don't say the same things every, you know, you can say that you agree with something that was said before. And try to keep the comments down to, uh, five minutes. Okay?
Are you pointing your name?
Yes, yes, yes.
Love of Kathy.
Ginger.
Her name is Ginger Cleventer. I live at one twenty East Kichai Road, which is just west of where they're wanting to put in the liquor store. And I have a comment and a question. We already have the schoolhouse that sells liquor and has food and stuff. And then we also have Jump Start, that if you want beer, you can go there and buy it. Why do we need a liquor store when you can go a mile and a quarter up the street and buy liquor? I don't feel, well, first of all, I don't drink. My family does, but I don't. I don't think we need a liquor store here, when if you want it that bad, you can just drive a mile or so to get it. And then my other question is, if there's gonna be parking and all that, are the people that's putting that in, are they gonna put a privacy fence on the west side of that property? Because my house is right there next to their empty field. And, uh, other than their other buildings and stuff, I don't have any problems with that. But I do with the liquor store, since you can already buy alcohol there. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jen. Um, just a comment, uh, or a question for Dustin. So, um, the way we used to do this, they would come with a site plan. And I'm not gonna be, be self-aware. It's a different site plan, uh, uh, that, that basically be a sketch plan, like what they submit.
Cause what I'm wondering, cause we used to be able to require that they have, uh, fencing or, uh,
I think it's screening, right?
Screening, yeah.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be a fence.
But you can recommend a particular kind of whatever.
That can be a condition if that is something that you guys want.
It would have to be done during this.
Yes.
And if I could go ahead and comment. Is I, are we the regulations that, um, typically there is screening required between residential and commercial? However, the C one district, the arts and business district, see, the residential, single-family residential is permitted use in that district. And as proposed in the envision for C one is to be a walkable district. So screening, the way, I understand the regulations, the way I read them last time I was on administrative was that screening is not required in the C one district between residential and commercial because it's envisioned to be a walkable district. And if you were gonna walk from the ice cream shop to the liquor store, you shouldn't have to go through a screening. If both of those are permitted uses, you shouldn't have to, it shouldn't be screened from one to the other. As opposed to if you're in a single-family residential district and you're next to a multifamily or a commercial, a straight light commercial, heavy commercial district, there should be screening in there. And that being said, that even, some of the screening that's been required to be done by the scene, by the city in this district, there hasn't been done. So, I'm not sure where we're at on.
So that's, that's true. When I did my, uh, development, me and the property owner next door, we agreed to a certain kind of screening and that's what, what we did. So, I mean, we can require a screen. I mean, we can, uh, it'll be up to the, I guess, the council whether they approve, but that could be a part of it.
Correct.
Yeah. I, I agree with that statement. Okay, and, uh, and I guess after the, uh, question, one, uh, the liquor store question, I guess you could answer that later. After you can maybe make some comments.
Are you ready for another person?
Yeah, go ahead.
I hope she has two. Joni Harris, one oh nine West Chippewa. I'm here tonight to express my opposition to the conditional use permit application for a liquor store. It's just not the right business in the right location within the arts and business district. With only eight undeveloped properties within the arts and business district and a desire by the Kichai community to see the vision and plans of the arts and business district realized, I urge the planning commissioner to be discerning in your decision-making. Here's my reasons for opposition. Number one, even though the properties that surround the applicant property are nearly all C one, according to the staff report, these are mostly residential in current occupancy. Yes, I understand the mixed use nature of the arts and business district, but building a liquor store in the midst of residences is not a good mix of residential and commercial. Number two, according to the staff report, Kichai should have ample gathering spaces, especially within the arts and business district. A liquor store is not a gathering space. It is a retail operation where people come and go. And I just wanna highlight that this hearing tonight is about the liquor store conditional use. It's not about the coffee and ice cream shop. It is stated, the applicant also indicated a floral shop and the possibility of a coffee ice cream shop. There are no definite plans yet given in the information you were provided that that would happen. In addition, there is no floral shop in the drawing you have before you. It's only the liquor store and the coffee and ice cream shop. Number three, tonight, the city of Wichita city council is considering allocating funds at the request of DCCA, developing caring communities committed to action from the liquor tax to fund twenty beds for substance abuse victims that need inpatient care and cannot afford it. Unfortunately, we must consider the ongoing issues that are affecting many people in our current times. Alcohol addiction impacts men, women, children, and families. And I understand alcohol abuse personally, as we have one son who has recovered from it and another who is still trapped inside of it. Number four, in researching how far current operating liquor stores are from Kichai, there are four within less than a fifteen-minute drive and one that is merely three minutes away on sixty-first and Park City. For those residing in Kichai, if they wanna purchase alcohol, it is not a significant burden upon them to access a place to purchase alcohol. And in a city of less than, or around five, twenty-five hundred people, there are many, many other business opportunities that would support local artisans and complement those businesses, because that is the purpose of the arts and business district. To foster artisan creativity while supporting the needs of art-based and complementary businesses. I just don't see any justification for approving a conditional permit for a liquor store within the scope of the vision of the arts and business district. Number five, Valley Floral Greenhouse does host a few plant festivals each year, which are delightful and draw many people from the surrounding area to Kichai. They held an event recently and posted on their Facebook page, it was recommended that people attending the event should park on the two hundred Kichai Road property, south of the greenhouses. Will these events end, or how does Valley Floral plant to accommodate parking for festival attendees? There are only a few parking spots available to park at the business, and those are not available for special events, as food trucks and customer pickup and drop-off occur in those spaces during those events. Number six, many residents in Kichai, as you know, were not happy that Old School Tap House was permitted. Approving a conditional use permit for liquor store does not align with the type of businesses that the people of Kichai have indicated they desire to see inside the arts and business district. That doesn't mean it couldn't happen somewhere outside of the district. Number seven, city staff states that approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to public health, safety, or welfare. With increasing addiction issues, the possibility of increased crime, and a business that is selling alcohol, the statement is inappropriate, and the actual outcome of whether it will or will not have a detrimental impact is unknown at the time of this application. And one side note, C one does not allow for multi-business strip malls. I've already brought this up with another hearing that occurred for a property, unless you change the zoning. Richard and I talked about it quite a bit, you can't have multi-business strip mall. The multi-office can happen, but a multi-business is not currently permitted inside C one. Finally, this business just does not benefit Kichai, except for increasing city of Kichai income through utilities, property taxes, and sales tax revenue, but it does not represent a business that residents of the city of Kichai desire for the arts and business district. Yes, we'd love to have a coffee shop, ice cream shop, or a floral shop. So, please deny the application, thank you.
No, do you wanna get that?
Yeah, go ahead, you, you get a question.
Just one second, Joni, can you come back for?
Oh, sure. No one's ever talked to me before.
I like what you said.
So, I, I appreciate your feedback, I disagree with some of it.
Okay.
Um, I was here when the, when the tap house was approved. I can assure you that there were very many citizens of this, in this, in this city that were very excited and encouraged about the tap house.
I'm sure there were some that were.
Okay, so, um, I, I, I'd be taking, I, I, I appreciate your opinion.
Yeah.
What I take offense to is you saying that the city does not want this, that you're speaking for more than yourself.
Okay.
So, I appreciate your comment.
Okay.
And I'll take it wholeheartedly, but I'm not gonna take what you say as an opinion of many.
Okay, absolutely.
So, um, because I was there, I heard both sides. And I don't think you were there when that.
I was not here, I just hear from a lot of people that you do, they're still upset. Yeah.
So, when, when you say that that's something the city didn't want, I, that's.
It's an observation of many residents that still say today that they don't like the tap house.
Okay.
And that's okay, and there's gonna be people that do, and that's okay.
Have you witnessed, have you, have you been by the tap house and seen the parking?
There's lots of people that come from outside of Kichai that come to the tap house, absolutely. I'm sure there's people inside Kichai that come to the tap house, absolutely.
Go ahead and just.
So, hold on.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, chairman, am, am I not allowed to?
No, no, go ahead, I mean, I, we're just, we're just like arguing.
I, I'm listening to what you say.
We're not arguing, we're making point.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, I cannot respond if you put, if I don't.
But I'm just, I'm just saying that some of her comments, I felt like she was speaking for the city. And I don't feel like that's accurate, and I'll stop there.
Okay.
If, if you want to.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
My name is Karen Anderson, I'm here with Lee Boyer. We're here to voice our objections to the exemptions being proposed in the C one-zoned property to allow the liquor store. The exemptions being proposed do not fit into the art and business district overall positive plan for the core of our city. The exemptions given to the alcohol-based business next door, the bar, have not enhanced our city in any way. How will another alcohol-based city do that? I'll, I'll back up and say, we own the property to the north of this proposal property and of the bar. We have five and a half acres there. As a property owner that adjoins this property asking for the exemptions, the development of the property, we want to put on record for everyone to know that the drainage easement, once in place, allowing the use of our property for drainage, has been vacated. For any future development, a plan will have to be in place that does not allow our property to be used for drainage. We are not inclined to allow our property to be used for that drainage, even if we're approached now or in the future. Granting these exceptions before having a final plan on the table seem to be having the process out of order. The applicant mentioned that a pond would be equitable for drainage. Well, the pond has to drain somewhere when it overflows. That then will fall onto our property. And that's not acceptable to us, whether it's on the west side of their building or on the north side. It will still flow that direction, uh, and that's just not acceptable. City zoning have sound reasons for being in place. We feel the main reason is to protect the joining properties. We ask that you not allow these exemptions. But if you do, we insist that you put into place the exemption, that they must put up a fence, not screening, but a fence on their property at their expense to protect the residence-zoned R one that will feel the biggest impact by having another alcohol-based property next door. The screening that we have been dealing with, with the old-school tap house, has been totally ineffective. But we'll get to that at the next issue. Any questions?
Any question? I'm gonna take some, just a minute. So, is your main objective to this conditional use request, the fact that it's alcohol-based?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Arnold Thomas, junior. I live at two oh five East Kichai Road, across the street. Personally, I like the tap house, except for the traffic. There can be anywhere from twenty to fifty cars on the weekend, parking across the street, and now have access to the alley, but that's far enough. The liquor store's just gonna bring more traffic. The drainage that they touched on is going to be your major problem, because there's nowhere for it to go. The crick don't go anywhere, it goes underneath the parking lot, it's collapsed. You know, I love the idea of a sandwich shop, or an ice cream parlor, a coffee shop, and I don't drink coffee. I don't drink beer, but I love tap house, tacos right across the street. You bet. You bet. A sandwich right across the street? Something, you know, something in Kichai. I don't like all the concrete. I don't like all the drainage. I grew up here. I grew up within two-hundred yards of where you're wanting to build this. One-twenty-five, one-thirty-five Foreman, two-oh-five Kichai. I grew up here. I got my first stitches crashing my bicycle in Foreman. Kichai's not Kichai anymore. I don't know how many of you grew up in a small town. It's not a small town anymore. It's growing way too fast. I mean, we've got the little park right down there in the Business District. It's business, not commercial. It's always been the Business District. Post office wanting to deliver to our house, 'cause it's a business district. You know, I like the idea of some of the change. You guys have got to do something about the traffic. Fifty cars going behind my house? And that isn't even what I want to say. The little house that you said wasn't built yet?
Right, well, in the picture.
Yeah, in the picture that he showed, the little house that wasn't built yet, right on the corner of Foreman's, Kichai Road. It's built now. There's, there's a Wichita policeman living in it, with two little bitty boys. In the rental, right next door, Penegras's old house, where I grew up. I was a student living in that house. And, uh, now I forget what I was saying, but, you know, there's fifty cars, twenty cars, I, 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 it's only been fifty once, but there've been twenty cars regularly, three or four times, three or four days a week. And they're coming down that alley, out into Foreman, with all these little kids playing. We finally got kids moving back into downtown. That, you know, we finally got kids moving back. You know, that's all I got to say. Nobody else said anything about the kids. You know, we finally got downtown coming alive again. And, thank you. Food, food, not liquor. Food, not liquor. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Doug Redan, three-nine-two, East Slade in Court. Uh, appreciate the opportunity. Uh, I'm a rookie here. I've never, I'm a creature, but I've never spoke in front of city officials, so thanks for letting me do this. I, I save a lot of time. I agree with what these people said. Uh, I grew up in Wichita. I lived in Kansas City, Colorado, Colorado Springs, Dallas. My wife and I got married. I lived in Park City. And, but we wanted a little smaller town. And so we came to Kichai. We love it. Just as much time to east, to west side. He's my back neighbor. We yell at each other all the time, in a good way. And, uh, um, but I have a question on the, you talked about the study on the impact. Can that be made public? You said there was very little impact from your study of the alco-, of, of the liquor store.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be going through those, so, what is your, what is your question? I mean, impact?
I, I'd like to know, you, you're the one that said, I think on the screen, there was a study that would be very little impact on the city with no liquor store. Is that correct?
I don't know if there was a study. What did you say, um?
I believe that was just part of the staff report, saying, yeah. Oh, let's see. I know that, um, I had said that the city does not foresee, um, anything. Let's see, length of time the property's been undeveloped is about nine years.
Yeah, in the section that states which removal of the restrictions will definitely affect nearby property, the staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. So I don't know that there was a study necessarily.
Okay, but how, how, how was that conclusion come from?
We will, look, that's what, that's what they came up with. We will go through that, and we will end.
Okay.
Uh, based on your comments, we'll add, that, that's based on Kichai's professional staff opinion.
Okay, all right. Uh, I agree with you on the signs and banners. Uh, 'cause in, in some places, that's all you see, is a big banner. I, I, I agree with that, and I don't know about the restrictions, but, a couple more things. I never envisioned that a liquor store would be part of a walking community. Ice cream shop and stuff, but never a liquor store. I, I'm against this. One last question, and I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe you already have, and I just missed it, but, how does a liquor store add value to the community other than revenue? That's all I have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee.
Hello, Rebecca Hatch, and I was on break week with my husband and my three young boys. And, um, I'm speaking, I'm opposed to a liquor store being put on that part, um, on two-hundred Kichai Road, and for mul-, several reasons. One, multiple studies have found that in places where there's more, um, alcohol, alcohol stores, not just places you can go in and buy a beer like in school, places where you go in and buy whatever you want and you take it out with you, there's an increase in violent crime rates, including things, and these are from studies from Johns Hopkins, National Institute of Health, U.S. Institute on Alcohol Abuse and Alcoholism. There's a stronger association with incidences of violent crimes, including homicides, aggravated assaults, sexual assault, and robbery, than places where alcohol's bought and consumed on-site, like bars and restaurants, which we do have Old School already, but, and the reason being that employees are, they're isolated from patrons. People are coming in and buying whatever and they're leaving, whereas at Old School, you know, people are kind of being monitored in a way. You see how much they're drinking, you see how they're doing, you see who they're with, you see what they're going home with. It's a completely different business model, so I'm not opposed to the idea of the alcohol so much as just the, the buying of it. And I know from personal experience, having multiple neighbors, one neighbor who would drive over to our house on his way to Jump Start to go get a twelve-pack, who was drunk, and would pull into my driveway with my three kids on bikes. Alcoholism is a problem in my neighborhood. I can count three or four people that I know actively struggle with it. I don't feel like bringing this into the community is going to help in any way, shape, or form. In a town that only has twenty-four hundred people, we already have Old School, it's available at Jump Start as well, I don't think that adding a liquor store meets any unmet need in our community. That need has been filled. I think it's great if there's other businesses that wanna go in that place. Things that are walkable, things that families and other people in the community might want to walk to. I can't really see people walking down the street to get a twelve-pack and then walking back home with it. I don't think this is, this fits in the model. And as we strive to build an Arts and Business District that will draw people into our town, I think we need to think about what people in the community really want. I just, yeah, I just don't, I don't think this adds any value, and I don't personally think it adds any diversity to what we have already in the community. Um, and I'm glad there's so many other things that were said. I, I mean, I agree with the signage. I agree with the drainage issue. I know last time, in twenty-fifteen, I think, that was why everything fell apart, was the people that bought it wanted to, wanted the city to kind of maybe have some skin in the game with, uh, the drainage issue. Can't remember exactly, so you people that were here will remember. But as a taxpayer, I'm opposed to having to pay for someone else's drainage issue as well. Any questions at all?
Nope.
You're thinking about something, Chris.
Well, I, I, I think my comments are basically, I think, so.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, as a, as a real estate professional as well, I wanna say from my own opinion, and I've, I've mentioned this before. I don't want, when people, when people drive through Kichai, the main streets, they see our sixty-person Oliver. These are the key streets we really need to focus on, making sure we're working for a diversity of businesses that bring value-added things, that would want, would want families to come to this community, and would want people to feel like this is a safe place to come and build their lives. And I don't think that adding a liquor store meets that end, personally. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lady Harris, one-oh-nine was Chippewa. I agree with the majority of the reasons, if not all of the reasons, why, um, don't need a liquor store in Kichai. A liquor store does not fit the character of city Kichai. I attended a recent city visioning workshop conducted by PEC, and the residents of Kichai that attended that also, um, there were many people there. They did not mention a liquor store as one of the businesses that they were interested in having. There were so many other types of businesses, some of them already talked about, including coffee shop, ice cream shop, things like that, or a small cafe or something. I think it would be good for city staff and potentially the planning commission to actually review that workshop information again and actually read what it says, and what the city council and what the residents want here in Kichai. Regarding the resident that wants to put up a screening or fencing, residents wouldn't have to do that if this liquor, this potential, this liquor store was coming in. I know they're dealing with, uh, Old School and some of the things that are happening there. But they wouldn't have to do that at their own expense. I don't think that's fair to go up to that resident. One comment made, to the extent to which removal of these restrictions will detrimentally, detrimentally affect nearby property, but the staff does not anticipate the approval of this request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. I feel like staff is not considering the effects of having a liquor store in Kichai. Chief Moore has already indicated several times in council meetings how the new entertainment district in Park City is negatively affecting traffic along Oliver, as well as criminal activity increasing in the general area. Having a liquor store as a stop for those coming and going to that district would be a detriment to those properties next to it, as well as properties along the way. Regarding the comments about approval, this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impact to public health, safety, or welfare. Like has already been discussed, we all have probably in this room have been touched by liquor and alcoholism in some way. Having another liquor store obviously supports economic activity in a city, but is it the right kind of business in the heart of Kichai? Do people who shop at liquor stores drive under the influence? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not. I would say there could be a significant impact to the public's health, self, safety, and welfare having a liquor store, in addition to the two other retail establishments that sell liquor, uh, today. And regarding the loss in use and enjoyment of the applicant's property, the owners do not live in Kichai. Yes, they have a business here, but their only loss of enjoyment would be the profits from a liquor store, and, um, that they don't even live near. And then one last thing, um, as my wife had said, a multi-tenant building is only allowed in C-two, not C-one. And so it'd be good to have the zoning regulations in this meeting, that's, that's maybe something to refer to going forward. Look, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Has the secretary or zoning administrator received any written or verbal comments?
No.
Okay, uh, any other, look. Just, you, uh, wanna address any items, um?
I guess I, I completely hear those concerns, thank you. I defer back to the expertise about not having that negative impact on the community's behavior. And we're just looking to estimate the economic growth of this business, thank you. So, as far as a walkable thing, that's what the vision that we had, being able to, ice cream, coffee, being able to walk to our greenhouse, and the liquor store for some degree of enjoyment. And I think people have this notion, they think it's gonna be this, it, it's gonna be, there's gonna be fine wines. It's gonna be kind of an upper echelon kind of, uh, look and feel, because that's what values always strive to be, to be on the high end of whatever we bring on. You know, I welcome people back again to visit our greenhouses, to visit our distribution centers, to visit some of our retail flower shops that we own, that we're always trying to strive to bring beauty to it, because that's the ultimate, that business that we're in, we're in the farm business. We constantly strive to bring beauty and, and art, we're big on art and design, into the area. So I think everybody would be pleasantly surprised if the board approves just how beautiful even a liquor store can become for the community. It's something that the city of both coffee shop, ice cream, and liquor that can be proud of, and hopefully bring more residents into our community. Thanks.
Any final comment? Hearing no further, uh, comments. I hereby close the public hearing. Lady Commission, have any, any questions or comments, or? Well, I've got comments.
I think the, you know, the multi-business in C-one, I think is the first thing that we need to talk about. So, Chris, obviously you're the expert, so maybe you could.
I don't know if I'm the expert, but I've got previous experience.
Experienced, anyway.
Yeah, and, 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 and that's something, I guess, that bothers me in a way, and I, I think it's gonna come up later tonight, in a way, if not right now, but, it bothers me, and, and I'm somewhat embarrassed to say, I was the zoning administrator when these regulations were enacted, but, multi, like you said, under the current regulations, multi-tenant office isn't allowed use. Multi-tenant retail is not allowed use. I guess, I didn't quite analyze that or digest it fully, maybe when I was the zoning administrator. But to me, many of Kichai's previous and current businesses, and maybe before this, are multi-tenant, whether it's office, retail, or whatever. And to me, I really don't have a problem with a multi-tenant building. To me, what should be the overriding, uh, issue is whether that retail use, that office use, whatever, is allowed in that zoning district. Whether it's allowed in a single building or a multi-tenant building. That should be the overriding use. Not that we should be saying, oh, well, there's more than one use in this building, so it can't be allowed. A multi-tenant, multi-tenant office, in my opinion, in my opinion only, um, should be allowed. I've seen no reason for it not to be allowed. It should be guided more on the permitted uses in that zoning district, whether they are in a single-use building or a multi-tenant building, office or retail. So that, that's, that's my comment on that. I've got, I, I think that's an issue on our zoning regulations.
And change up right there.
Right, so, and, so, um, we are addressing that, but that's not a question here. So, even though it is a concern that they'll have to cross, but the question here now is whether, like you said, if it, if we allow this use. And so we, we won't be addressing that, and so, so going back to that. Okay. Under the current zoning regulations, a liquor store, wine, that I'm, I'm not gonna quote directly, but a liquor store, we're all talking about, is only permitted as a conditional use. Yeah. So, the foresight of the planning commission, the zoning administrator, our consultant before that, and the city council who approved this when these zoning regulations were enacted, was that, um, a liquor store could be allowed as a conditional use, which means that we could put conditions on it. Doesn't mean that, because I don't think a liquor store is the right use in the C-one, that's not what a conditional use means. It means you can put, put conditions on that to be allowed. That's what a conditional use is. Doesn't mean that it can't be allowed. It means it can, it should be discussed in a forum like this, that residents, property owners, business owners should be allowed to express their opinions, and that the planning commission make a recommendation to the planning, to the city council on that approval. Saying that, to me saying that that's not the right use, that's not something we can address, because the current zoning reg, if you as citizens, and when you go to these workshops, you say, you, you feel that that is not something that should be allowed in the Arts and Business Districts, you need to make that opinion loud and clear. This is not something we wanna see. Because right now, like I said, it's allowed by conditional use. So, conditional- So conditional use means we can put a conditions on it. If, if there's no conditions that the, that the planning commission or the city council sees needs to be applied to this use, it's a permitted use. We're only allowed to put conditions on it. Doesn't mean that because it's a conditional use and we don't like it, we can't, we say no. That's not what a conditional use is. Okay, and then that's, that's my experience speaking, and, and if you got an attorney that's gonna tell me I'm wrong, I'll listen to him, but that's my experience, is that conditional use means that it's a, you can put conditions on it, but if you have no conditions that, that concern you about this use being in that zoning district, because when we enacted those zoning regulations, that's what, that's what the concern was, was that, well, we might have some concerns about that use in this district, so when, when somebody asks to have a liquor store, we're gonna say, okay, you can only do this, you can only operate in these hours, you can only do that, not, you can't do it. So that's, I, I appreciate everybody's feedback, I, I enjoy it. That's what this, that's what America's about, is this discussion right now. But under the current regulations, so there are a lot of uses that are not permitted in the C one at all. So if that's what the majority of this community wants to see, is we don't wanna have a liquor store in the C one district, we need to change the zoning regulations, to say that's not permitted. Right now, it's permitted as a conditional use. So what conditions do we wanna put on it to be allowed? And again, we are only a recommending body, the city council, they can ignore everything we say or do their own thing. Typically, that's not the case, they, 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 they value your input, they value your input as well. So that's where I'm sitting, is that I, I appreciate what you guys are saying and that we don't want a liquor store. I don't see where me as a zoning administrator can say, don't allow it. It's a conditional use. What conditions do we wanna put on it to allow?
Okay, and, and I understand what you're saying, Chris, but I looked at this and it says, use structure permitted by conditional use in the zoning district. It doesn't say that it's, it is allowed. You, the only way it's allowed is by conditional use, and that doesn't mean that all you can do is put conditions, you can, you can, you can recommend that it not be put in, in my opinion.
Okay, I disagree.
Okay, then, then I guess what we need to do is to get a ruling from the lawyer then.
Well, he is not the lawyer.
No, I'm saying from the city lawyer. I'm pointing to the city administrator.
He's not the attorney either.
I'm, I'm telling you, one of the two has gotta go to the, get a lawyer, if that's.
Well, I, I would think that based on our, our vote and our recommendation, that the city administrator will say, I, I discussed the recommendation with the city attorney and this is that.
Okay.
That's my experience.
Well, anyway, if you look at any of these, you can all look at the same thing. If you look on page forty-two, the table legend, and it lists condition, conditional use and approved, and it states right there, use structure permitted by conditional use in zoning district. The only way it's allowed is by putting, or having a conditional use, and if we disapprove of conditional use, then you disapprove of that being allowed.
Okay, and, and he, if that's, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chairman.
No, that's, that's my opinion, so I, I understand your, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, let me take this a different direction, rather than the letter of the law, what's written in the zoning regulations, because the, the public has raised some issues that goes back to the, I'm gonna say the inadequate site plan. I worked at a former location for about eight years as a planning commissioner, and since I've come to Key Chai and got put on the planning commission here, I have not seen anything that meets the high level of, of site plans that we were presented with on the first mention of the process. I'm not picking on you directly, and so what I'm trying to say is that, I think maybe the, the, the planning on this is a little premature. I think the public would appreciate a site plan that shows such things as traffic ways, in and out, parking, a potential drainage concept. I understand at the planning stage, because I've been involved in that all along, things change. Just build a deck, and I had some flousy lumber, so I had to change my plan, okay? Plus, she who must obey wanted the stairway moved to a different spot. Yes. My point being is that I, I would, I would feel much more comfortable looking at this project if we would table the move, the action, and allow the applicant to actually dig in, talk to the people, get some ideas of how things could be worked out. I'm assuming you've done your due diligence for the liquor store aspect economically, getting traffic counts and, you know, projections of revenue and all that kinda stuff. And so you've made a decision, that, that might be a viable thing, but maybe there's something else that's better. Just saying, that's, yes, please.
And part of the thing, I know it seems premature, right, that you would be, it was recommended by the city, thank you, that first draw a rough draft to make sure it was approved, because involving people like you're saying, engineers, you know, that, there's a high cost to it, thank you.
Yes.
To go through the whole process and say, well, by the way, we're gonna do it for approved, thank you. So making sure that, that it's approved, then we're gonna go through the due diligence of getting an engineer, we're gonna do drainage, drainage, that's, that's legal to the law, and making sure it's taken care of, but it's, it's kind of playing the horse for the cart, thank you, if you don't get approved, then, I mean,
I understand.
As a business person would be, there's no sense for me to invest the capital.
As a site owner, there, number two, applicant shall provide a revised site plan, including building dimensions, setbacks, easements, and an appropriate drainage plan relative to the project and structure before any building permit is submitted. That's already one of the conditions.
Question?
Yes.
What if the planning commission doesn't like what's being proposed? Do we have another chance to review? And so far, we haven't.
But Mark, in what aspect, what don't you like? The, the use?
I'm not opposed to the uses.
Okay, well, that's what, that's what this board is in charge of.
Understand, but in order for us to, to agree with what the use is and to bring in the public aspect of their concerns, to help the whole community, oops, to help the whole community, we, we need more detail than what we've got. I mean, a sketch plan on a big cheap tablet paper ain't gonna make it with me, excuse me.
No, no, it's, it's okay, Sam.
Does it take an engineer to do a, a, the kinda thing I'm looking for? I'm not looking for a schmazy, you know, thing, I just wanted to see, you know, where do you wanna have the, the driveway to come into your place? Draw a square where the parking's gonna be, put, put a, a, a little sketch where the sign for this. I'm curious too, are the two activities gonna be connected interior?
No.
So you're definitely gonna have two tenants in, in that facility.
You cannot mix it.
Because that was one of my law questions.
Uh-huh, by law, you can't do that, thank you, so, so the state, you can only do twenty percent, and that's why there's a true divisional behind it, thank you, so. I appreciate the fact that you would like more detail, and we will hire the right individuals, because you can't put up a building, you have to have, you know, a building that's structurally sound, a building that meets all the requirements, thank you, and for that, please, I mean, it does take cash, it takes money to do it, and when that moment happens, there will be something submitted that you guys would be able to approve that meets the legal requirements to set up a building and to address, which is one of the biggest concerns, which is gonna be the drainage, thank you. And this was recommended by the city, said, hey, because I was looking ahead of this, like, should we hire, it's like, no, no, if you remember the conversation, it's like, hey, wait till this happens, then here is the two companies that we would approve for you to get these, this kinda work done.
Well, I go Mark's thing, and I tend to agree, is that if we used to approve this, it'd never come back to us. So the public or us would have no say in it after that. It would be all up to the, either Dustin or the, you know, I would guess it'd be up to Dustin.
And, and I'm. Request with Chair.
Go ahead.
Request with four, Chair. Again, what this board is empowered to do is to make a recommendation to the planning, to the city council. We're not empowered to approve anything as the planning commission, only the board is only supposed to, we're not sitting there, is that right now? So if this gentleman comes to us right now with his chief tablet drawing and says, I'm gonna do liquor store over here, I'm gonna build a seventy-five hundred square foot building, one-third of it's gonna be liquor store, two-thirds of it's gonna be ice cream shop. Okay, we approve that? Everything else? He could do anything that is allowed in the C one. He could turn that whole building into a liquor store, based on we've, we've approved him to do that as a conditional use, and we, and, and again, as I see it, we're only empowered to put conditions on that. We're, and, and, and we can, if, if you're saying, well, we don't have any recommendations as a condition, and the, the gov, and the, the public feedback was against it, so we're recommending that we not approve it, make that motion. But I'm telling, I'm, I'm saying that we're here to put, it's a conditional use, we're here to recommend conditions on that. And if, after that's approved, he, the applicant chooses to make that whole seventy-five hundred square foot building, or a ten thousand square foot building, or a five thousand square foot building, a liquor store, he's gonna be entitled to do that.
Yep.
Approve. Here's the thing, I agree with Mark, but what, we're, this is wanting to go to the council, and basically, we have to justify that there was eight people that got up, and every one of them was against us. You know, so the public that lives around.
Totally disagree, this is not a popularity contest.
May I ask, I need to say that, there was eight people, the, the city, from my herd, has twenty-three hundred people. There was also, you know, that many of the people that didn't show up, that they didn't mind having a liquor store, coffee shop, drinking parlor, thank you, that decided that they would appreciate having that, and I understand that people usually are most opposed to the ones that are gonna show up. Everybody else decided that they would be okay, because they were getting enough notice to make a decision to show up and voice their opinion, so eight out of two thousand, three hundred people doesn't seem like a bad.
Well, here's the thing though, those eight all live right around you.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so.
But you're saying they speak for twenty-four hundred people that aren't here.
I didn't say anything, I'm just saying that I, there's eight people that are speaking up, and I think you need to take that into account.
Yes.
Go ahead.
And I, and I have.
You're appointed to represent the people of this community.
Okay, please.
In a few minutes, once we get done discussing things, we're gonna go through and review as a board, correct?
Yep.
These nine different.
Conditions.
Aspects that Dustin created for the recommendations and, and the, and the findings and his logic for these things. There's several things that we will look at that, that was brought out that is a concern, not only to the use, but also to the public itself, okay? One of them is a traffic plan, an idea of how are we gonna manage in and out, even of a, even if you decide to make a, a kitty wonderland with, with ice cream and who knows what, okay? You still gotta have, the, the, the city council's gonna wanna know, how are we gonna manage the traffic? I would, if I was on the city council, okay? The aspect of, of multi-tenant aspects should be looked at in the legal aspect that the chairman has made known. Or something else in there? Oh, drainage issues, huge thing. I'm, I'm a big believer that water runs by gravity, and it goes where it down well wants to go. And sometimes you just can't put an activity on a site, no matter what you do, okay? Several people brought up easements and drainage issues. Yes, that's a kinda after-the-fact change of the, the condition, or approval of the, of the conditional use, but at least have some idea to help those who have to make the decision that that's an inappropriate approach. You understand what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely, and that's why, when that moment, if the motion gets approved, we would hire, obviously, and that's why there's a condition that says if it doesn't get approved, the, if I understand you right, the drainage, I would not be able to build. So there's gonna be a team of engineers that show up, or, you know, the, the ones that are in the group, and they will set those, say, hey, this is what it would take to make those things happen, thank you. I, I am not an engineer, so I, I could not be able to tell you, draw you anything that would, which are my needs. Those people get hired, and, and ahead of the final approval, I'm gonna call it, those plans would be represented, thank you, and the city planner, and we'd have to look at those things and make sure they're being in the right order.
So what I propose is that we go through these, Mr. Chairman, and, and look at, you know, what are the issues here, identify those. If we do approve or recommend approval to the council, we can put in our, our, our ideas of what, our impacts that may be there that would affect the public, and let the, let the city council make that final decision.
Okay, and here's, just, we'll go through that in just a second, but I wanna read the, the sample motions put out, let's see. And the third one is, I move the planning commission adopt the findings, recommendations stated in the zoning administration report for case number CU dash twenty twenty-four dash zero three, I, I don't know if you should put that. And forward a recommendation of denial to the governing body that are under requested conditional use to allow a beer, wine, liquor store in the C one arts and business district. So right there, you're either gonna approve it or you're gonna disapprove, now, now let's go through the. Okay, so zoning uses, nothing's really changed in that, that's pretty well set. Number two is consistency with comprehensive plan, vision, character, and city check. And he put the request of the conditional use is in performance with Key Chai's twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. You have any problem with, other than the facts, oh, go ahead. The only other, the only thing I would say is, the comprehensive plan does say a walkable district, you know, for the C one. So that would be the only thing.
And there's nothing in the comprehensive plan that says liquor stores shouldn't be allowed in the C one district?
Right.
Agree with that?
Yeah, so it's, it's, uh, number three, adequacy of public utilities roadways, that's, nothing's different on that one. Do you agree? Mark, did you have, because you were talking about, I mean, traffic.
I, I would just begin to say, like, my assessment again is that, that goes back to the traffic aspect. I, I guess we're still trying to decide what to do with the intersection there at, at Oliver and sixty-first or Key Chai Road. And then we're what, uh, two, three hundred feet to the east, am I right?
Yes.
That intersection, we still don't know kinda what, what impact that might have to that, that utility.
Okay, so this here is mainly talking about, uh, all the utilities and, uh, so, I mean, it's got, uh, it's got roadways too, where, I mean, it's got all the utilities it's needed.
True.
Okay.
So is, so do you think that this requested use has any more impact than other permitted uses in the C one? On utilities, parking, roadway, flower shop, candy shore, candy store?
I don't have enough information to answer that question.
But that's the comprehensive, do, do you not agree that that's in the vision of the comprehensive plan?
To me, the comprehensive plan is a, a nice wonderful dream of what will someday maybe happen, perhaps tomorrow in.
Wow.
The universe.
The comprehensive plan is the guiding document for this body.
Yeah, I, it, it is.
And if we're not gonna agree on that, I'm done. I am done. Okay, so you don't see any changes strictly?
We don't need to.
Okay, and for the suitability of the subject, for the use, it's going to be stricter. Um, I think the walkability.
Please, sorry.
Did you argue?
I'm just guessing, I'm, okay, putting stuff down there.
I don't have any objection to, to either the, the liquor store or the, uh, flower shop.
Ice cream.
Ice cream, whatever. The, the use is fine, the problem is, is that we don't know how the use will actually impact our community. I, I mean, that was one of the, the previous, uh, conditional use activities we did a couple of months ago, we had the same problem. We had inadequate information, and we were giving Car bonns to somebody to go out and do something. And as you've said, Chris, they can turn right around and do anything they want to, as long as it's on that listing. And we don't even know that. Whereas, when you get somebody to, at least raise their right hand and come in and say, I plan to do X, Y, Z, then they're putting their name, they're putting their business on the line.
So this, this question, number four, is the suitability of, of putting a liquor store in the C one businesses. So that's what.
By conditional use.
By conditional use.
Right, but I'm saying, so what you would put in here is what things, uh, do not follow what, what you would have in the C one.
Right.
Okay, and that's, and that's completely my logic, chairman, is that why is it a conditional use and not a permitted use? If we're not gonna consider something that we're gonna say, we need to look at that a little closer and maybe put conditions on it to be allowed, why wouldn't it be allowed outright by the zoning regulations as a permitted use? And only as a conditional use, what, what, what's the purpose, I'm asking you, chairman?
I don't know. Um, what, what do you want me to say, I don't know?
Okay, but you're saying that, but previously you said that.
What you, what we were asked about, Mark, we wanted to go through this list and add things to this list. That's what we're doing, number four, is there anything on there that you wanna add?
No. I disagree with your, your assessment of that, Mark said we need to discuss these things. We got to number four, I wanna discuss that.
Okay, let's discuss.
Because, because you just seem to dismiss my comment that it's a conditional use. I'm bringing it up now, I want you to explain it to me, you're saying, okay, it's, it, we're, we're, we're examining this as a conditional use. So if it's only allowed as a conditional use, what conditions are we gonna put on? Otherwise, it should be allowed outright, but it should not be allowed at all.
There's a condition that you, either allow it or you don't allow it.
No, that's permitted or allowed or not, that's not conditional.
All right. Then, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna adding to the walk.
Okay, that's.
And that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
And then, and then, other items, if I can finish, please, uh, there was talk about signs, signs and banners, uh, could be, uh, not suitable for C one businesses, right? The screening, that it may require screening, um, now we can add that to a condition. And there was a comment that didn't fit the character of the C one business history.
Just for, so for number four?
I thought we were talking about number three. Number four, this is all number four. This is all number four.
Number three is just the adequacy of the public.
So the court just asked me about number three.
No, I asked about number four.
You asked about.
The suitability of the safety.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
That's what we're talking about.
And other than the walkability?
Walkability.
You wanted to add signage?
Signs, invaders, uh, may not be, I'm just saying, may not be suitable for the C one business.
Signage may not be suitable.
So. Well, can I, can I make a comment on our son or something?
Yeah.
If, I'm just asking, does the, I'm one, I'm one person up here. Chairman brought up that, that aspect, does the rest, do you guys agree with his assessment of number four, that's all I'm asking? Do you agree? He, he's made a statement, and all I'm asking is, I don't want, and I don't think Richard does either, that, that his statement speaks for the whole planning commission, right? Just because you said you don't agree with this, you're, you're not speaking for the whole planning commission.
No, I'm, I'm.
Okay, that's all I'm asking, that's all I'm asking, do, do you guys agree with Richard's comment on number four? Since we're going, and your, your con, your, your request was to go through these.
Yeah.
So that's all I'm asking, number four, Richard made a comment. I don't tend to agree with it, I'm asking, Luke and Mark, you?
I tend to agree with it.
Okay, that's fine, I, that's all I'm asking. I don't have any problem being disagreed with, at all, I, I've, I've lived three decades of my life doing that, so.
Okay, Luke, you have a problem with it? Walkability?
No. And that sign, signage was the other.
Signage was the one you put out.
And you included that in your comments?
Okay.
That's all I'm asking.
What I have is walkability of, walkability of a liquor store.
Aspect on number four.
Yep. Uh, screening.
What I have is walkability of a liquor store is not suitable within the C one. Signage may not be suitable, and screening may be needed to be required.
Yep, and then also, uh, there was a concern with, uh, traffic, that's more traffic than you would normally see in a, a C one business history, business. You guys okay with that, adding that to that? Okay.
I'm not gonna agree with it, but I'm okay with that.
You're okay? Okay, the length of time property's been vacant, uh, that, that's, nothing changed on that. Compatibility of the proposed district classification with nearby properties, uh, and Dustin put staff does not use or see an issue with the C one, or C one arcs business district being adjacent to other C one arcs business district and our own C one family, but it's. I think the same thing that was in four should go into six. You agree?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby properties? Uh, staff does not anticipate that removal of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Uh, I think it, it will have, it could have a significant effect. Chairman, that's not the question that's been asked.
Whi, which restrictions are we removing specifically?
Extent to which removal of the restrictions will detriment.
What restrictions are being removed?
What is that?
What is it asking? He's not asking for any restrictions to be removed, he's asking for conditional use to be a.
There's no restrictions.
Okay, so. Well, you just said you think there are.
Well, the staff says, uh, staff does, you know what? And, and if you're gonna have, if you're gonna have the planning commission like this, where we spend the whole time arguing, then you need to do something here.
Yes.
Because this is not effective, and I'm not gonna be fair.
First of all, I have very little say in what happens with the planning commission.
Right.
I am simply the city administrator. But from watching what's going on, because there is so much discussion and debate, what I would recommend doing tonight is tabling this issue. We can bring it back to the commission, and at that, maybe we can have our city attorney here to help decide some of these issues and bring clarity to them.
Okay, I would welcome that, thank you so much. Do I have a motion to pay?
I move that we table CU dash twenty-twenty-four dash oh three until, I'm sorry, I don't have the date for the June meeting.
Six eleven.
Until June eleventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Second, motion by Chris, second by Luke, uh, to table, uh, to table public hearing, and. Own finger?
Aye. Aye.
Can I get some clarity on something on that before the next meeting? It's just that if, if you had said that it doesn't matter what people in the community think, I mean, I think a condition would be, what's the population of the community think? I mean, as a community member who actually didn't even know about this, because I don't get the Ark Valley news, and I honestly don't know anybody that gets it, I think there are a lot of people, oh, good, good, that's good.
Yeah, I support my local businesses.
Good, I do too.
I put you on subscribe to the local.
Ark Valley news is your local business you support.
You don't get the land free every month?
We get the land, it wasn't in the land.
Yeah, free, don't support, you know, a little bit of a different.
Are you, yeah, you're, you're being critical and demeaning, but what I'm saying is, as a, as a person that cares about the community and wants people in the community to have their voice heard, what do I need to bring to the next meeting to show that there are people that have concerns that wanna be heard?
Sure, I think if, I think in this situation, with your questions that you have, that you call up to City Hall and schedule the time to meet with myself and Dustin, and we can help explain some of this to you, because in these decisions that are being made, there's a very narrow scope that we need to look at when making these decisions, basically a yes or no, okay? Of course, public opinion and comment plays into those with the decision that the board makes. Uh, but when this goes to the city council, their scope is pretty narrow in, uh, the decision that they make too, basically a yes or no. Does it fit these criteria? So, sitting down with myself and Dustin, we can maybe help explain those a little more to you before the next meeting.
That'd be great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I make a comment on something that Chris said?
Well, I, I, I guess for the, for the purpose of moving forward, since this issue's already been tabled, I would like to talk to you after the meeting, and you can, you and I can talk about that, because.
Well, I won't do any food after the meeting, because he won't hear it.
Yeah, my, well.
Oh, I, I, I would welcome any discussion at any time.
Yeah, my fear is that it's just gonna turn into a back and forth here, okay? And that's not appropriate for this, this segment.
I, I, I'm open for discussion at any time.
Okay, but I'll ask everybody who needs to write.
I now call. Hey, Richard?
Yes.
I hold just, can we take a five-minute break?
Oh, yes.
Let's take a five-minute. Yes, do we need a motion?
Need a motion to go to recess for however long we wish.
Move to recess for five minutes.
Second, motion by Luke, second by Mark, to.
Motion by Luke, second by Mark to.